Right.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
All right.
Are you?
Good luck.
Yeah.
All right. How are you doing?
Well, I'm probably in the same place. Good. More share of what's good. Why?
I'm following down.
Yeah. Uh, by six years.
It was awesome. It was really good. And it was, uh, just a lot of procedures that I get on.
Yeah.
To have kids back from the building. It just felt right.
My car week live is on each other. Sorry.
You know where that one is now. This is going to get being recorded right now and then we'll post it to YouTube after the minutes. Anything you can do. The whole district is down.
Is it gonna be done down in the basement?
Yeah. They have to. There's a message on the website and I'm contacting Karen on social media as well.
Okay.
Back there. It is still being recorded. No. There's a part.
Missing link.
The missing link. Well, of course, today we're giving the first.
The first day. I thought it was this. The hypergraph. That's what I mean. Well, very good. Well, Logan started on time regardless of whether we're streaming or not. Let's marry him to give our opening prayer. And then we'll just jump right into the agenda.
Our dear Father, we're thankful for the opportunity we have to be here together to discuss those issues that are important for our community and our students. We ask that we be blessed with thy guidance as we face difficult circumstances now with the COVID-19 pandemic and how this changes our decisions and way to keep our business here in the district. We ask that you bless us and bless the children and the teachers who serve and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mary Ann. If it's okay with the board, I'd like to propose that we rearrange our agenda a little bit. We have a group from Canyon Creek Services here. Just to be respectful of their time, I thought we could put them first. They've got a presentation. And they're a great partner in our community and in our schools. We appreciate them. I've met everyone. I know Kaylee since she was a young woman. And I just met Brandon and Tanisha. And so I don't know who's gonna be doing the presentation, but Kaylee, I'll turn the time over to you.
Thank you so much. Glad you were.
Yeah, I'll just start off really quickly. Just want to introduce myself. I am Dr. Brad Wadsworth, the Executive Director of Canyon Creek Services. And I wanted to come today personally as the Executive Director, not because you won't get fabulous information from Kaylee, but to let you know that as an organization, what we're here to talk to you about today is absolutely vital and central to what we're doing right now as an organization. And I wanted you to know that all the way up to the very top of our organization, our Board of Directors, this is a big deal for us and this is an initiative that we will continue to pursue. So I wanted to just say thank you on behalf of the organization for you making time today in your very busy schedules to talk about something that we know will change our community in a transformative way if it can be brought in and implemented. We're all about ending domestic and sexual violence in our community. We've long been known for 26 years as an organization. Some of you may have formally known us as Canyon Creek Women's Crisis Center. We have long been known as an organization that serves survivors. We served 770 individuals in our community this past year, 185 of which were children. And so we are working very hard. We've got funding from state and federal sources and from private donors to become as well-known for preventing violence in the first place as we are for serving survivors after the fact. And so we're here today to talk about prevention. You're gonna hear from Kaylee Bronson Cook, who is our Awareness and Prevention Director. We've dedicated an entire division of our organization to this work. And Kaylee is, to put it mildly, a rocket ship. She is brilliant and capable and her sidekick, Tanisha, is also extremely qualified. And I just wanted to be here personally to thank you for your serious consideration of what we have to say today because we know that it will change our community. And we appreciate all you do as you deal with so much of what you're dealing with right now that you would make time for us to come today. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Grant. Grant is an expert at talking people up, but like he said, my name is Kaylee Bronson. My name is Kaylee Bronson Cook. I recently got married, so that's an interesting change to make. We're here today to talk to you about the need for violence prevention in our schools and what we've done in the past and what we want to work towards with the district and administration and teachers, like Grant said, to prevent this type of violence from ever happening in the first place. So I'm a Cedar High School alumni. Go Reds! Like Grant said, we are previously Canyon Creek Women's Crisis Center. I'm the Awareness and Prevention Director there. And we're so happy to be here with you. Thank you so much for your time, especially, we didn't know, we realized recently that today's the first day of school and there's so much going on. So for you to take your time out of your very busy lives to hear a little bit about what we have to say, it really goes a long way. So we'll have a time for question and answer at the end. We provided each of you a copy of the slides, so if you want to take notes for questions that you may have at the end, we'll be happy to answer those. All of the information that we're gonna be going over today and that we'll be providing is based on nationally recognized research and evidence and best practices from reputable sources. And we've included the references in the last four slides of our presentation and also in the copy that we've given you. So without further ado, we want to talk to you today about an issue that's impacting so many Iron County students and families, unfortunately. But more importantly, we want to talk to you about ways that we can prevent this violence from ever happening in the first place. This is all the more relevant and pressing during this time of responding to the COVID-19 pandemic. We know that that's had a drastic impact on families and on students. So just some statistics for you. In the state of Utah, one in three women and one in five men will experience either stalking, physical, or sexual abuse from an intimate partner. What's important to know about these numbers is that this does not include emotional or verbal abuse, which we know can be just as, if not more, damaging than some of the physical types of abuse that people can experience. According to the 2017 Youth Risk Behavior Survey, rates of teen dating violence far exceed any other type of violence that a teen could experience, including bullying and cyberbullying. According to the Utah Department of Health, rape is the only violent crime that occurs in Utah at a higher rate than the rest of the U.S. We know that kids in our community are suffering from the effects of domestic violence and sexual assault because, like Grant mentioned, last fiscal year Canyon Creek Services served 189 child and youth victims of domestic and sexual violence. And this number has only continued to increase year after year as we promote Canyon Creek Services in the community so children and families know they can come to us for help. Here are some really interesting pieces of data from Utah high school students who reported teen dating violence. Again, please note that these numbers are actually based on self-reported SHARP survey data. Therefore, the actual rates of violence may be much higher because students may not recognize what they've experienced as violence. Just a quick little anecdote before I began work in Awareness and Prevention, which is what I do now. I actually worked as a child and youth victim advocate at Canyon Creek. So this issue is very near and dear to my heart personally. I have worked firsthand with many Iron County School District students and their families and parents as they've navigated the horrible aftermath of violence in their homes. The experiences that I had working directly with child victims really prepared me well to do what I do now in prevention. And more importantly, I think emphasized to me the importance of prevention education early on so that we can stop this violence from ever happening to protect children and families in our community. So what do we know about intimate partner violence? We abbreviate it as IPV. A lot of syllables. What we know is that whether it be domestic sexual stalking, intimate partner violence starts early. A national survey found that an estimated 12.5 million individuals in the U.S. experienced intimate partner violence before the age of 18. Almost 50% of women in Utah experienced their first completed sexual assault before the age of 18. Intimate partner violence generally begins in adolescence and young adulthood and actually, contrary to popular belief, declines with age, which just indicates a stronger need for prevention efforts. Even if youth are not the primary victims of violence themselves, we know that youth can be at risk due to being exposed to violence in the home or even perpetrating violence themselves. Our work at Canyon Creek is not only vital because we provide services to youth in hopes of mitigating some of the harms of violence, but because we know this violence is preventable. The good news, now that I feel really depressed, everybody, the good news is that prevention works. Prevention programming that is evidence-based works to prevent violence from ever happening by preventing potential perpetrators from ever perpetrating violence in the first place. So in the world of public health and violence prevention, our focus is on minimizing risk factors and on enhancing protective factors. So here are some examples of risk factors and some examples of protective factors. We at CCS partner with several local organizations and groups, coalitions, all with the same goal, to protect kids and families. That's our goal. We all work together to minimize these risk factors and many others and enhance these protective factors in our community. As you can see in the letter that we've included and we sent to each of you from the Iron County Sexual and Domestic Violence Prevention Coalition, we at CCS are not the only ones who are advocating for increased prevention programming in schools. We work very closely with members of law enforcement, social services, our local health department, and other organizations to carry out prevention work in our area. So you may be thinking, what does violence prevention in the schools actually look like? When prevention is going to schools, our primary focus is about teaching students skills regarding healthy relationships and bystander intervention. I was trying to do this presentation without a mask and it's stuck. So I'm gonna make sure I sort of this was over here. So our main focus when we go into schools is we want to emphasize healthy relationships and bystander intervention, like I said. Healthy relationships programming includes teaching students skills about building and maintaining healthy relationships that are based on equality, respecting other people's boundaries, understanding consent in all kinds of relationships and situations. Healthy relationships programming has been shown to have a statistically significant effect on the reduction of violence perpetration and victimization both. Youth who participated in Safe Dates, which is an evidence-based healthy relationships program, reported up to a 92% less dating violence victimization or perpetration compared to control groups in a series of four-year follow-ups. So we know that healthy relationships programming works in preventing violence. We also know that bystander intervention programming is focused on teaching students skills on how to identify situations that may lead to harm or violence and also teaching skills on how to step in and intervene to promote health and safety. Bystander intervention programming can be applied both to domestic and sexual violence, but also to a wide variety of other issues such as bullying, suicide ideation or self-harm and other behavioral and mental health issues. Green Dot, for example, is an evidence-based bystander intervention program. Evaluations from this program have found that campuses that implement Green Dot programming, where Green Dot programming has been implemented, have lower rates of violence perpetration and victimization when compared with other campuses without any bystander intervention training. One study found that this program is associated with a significant 40% decrease in teen dating violence perpetration, for example. So as I'm sure all of you are aware, adverse childhood experiences have a significant impact on children's development, their academic success, and their well-being. While abuse and neglect themselves are ACEs, they also greatly increase the risk for other ACEs. An estimated 62% of adults have experienced at least one ACE and 1/4 of adults have experienced four or more ACEs. By teaching students healthy relationship skills and working to protect against violence in our community and connecting students to caring adults, we can prevent ACEs and mitigate the harm of existing ACEs. Raising children who don't perpetrate violence as teens and adults will reduce ACEs for future generations. And the harmful effects of ACEs can also be mitigated through many of the same prevention strategies that we implement and advocate for. Some other benefits of prevention programs in schools include decreased pure violence, healthier, happier students, a more positive school climate, and increased parent-child communication. When we decrease the rates of violence in our community and in schools through the use of evidence-based primary prevention programs, kids will be better able to achieve success both as students and as healthy, stable adults. Prevention programming really can change and save people's lives. So now you may be wondering, well, why are you coming to talk to me about this? Don't you already do this in schools? It is true, we do. In the past, Canyon Creek has partnered with individual health and adult roles teachers to provide one-time educational presentations in individual classrooms. While these experiences have been overwhelmingly positive, CCS preventionists have experienced barriers in collaborating with teachers in schools who are hesitant about potential negative feedback from parents, school, and district administration. Because our prevention staff do not have established relationships with students, we also worry that our message may not be as effective or impactful as it could be coming from that student's teacher. So according to voluntary feedback surveys that were collected following CCS healthy relationships programming implemented in the fall of 2019, 93% of Cedar Middle School and 89.2% of Canyonview High School students who chose to complete our survey agreed with the statement, "After participating in this program, I am more likely to speak up if I suspect that someone is being bullied or is in an unhealthy relationship." Teachers have also been overwhelmingly supportive and see the value of the education that we provide to students. One teacher shared with us in an email after a visit to our classroom, "You made the presentation fun and interactive, but also kept it respectful and on a middle school level," which is so important. I personally have the opportunity to carry out much of this programming in our local schools and I have been so impressed with the students' involvement and their willingness to participate and their willingness to ask questions. They've demonstrated to me in my experience that they really want more opportunities to learn about this content and have more exposure to these topics so that they can keep their friends and family safe, in my experience. So we're here because we need to be doing more. While we are happy to see that our limited one-time programming has been helpful, it is not enough. We need prevention programming to be integrated into classrooms with higher dosage and with more individualized instruction and attention. As with anything that students learn, evidence shows that repeated, ongoing, and long-term programming is the most effective way to allow students to truly learn, retain, and practice and integrate skills into their lives. Essentially, successful programs not only teach skills, but allow for ongoing practice and reinforcement. We need to be able to give students the tools that they need to be able to build healthy, safe communities and relationships over time. While we, and I can speak for Tanisha as well, while we love connecting with students in the schools, teachers are the ones that know best the needs of their students. We are happy to continue providing our one-time program, one-time programming. However, research tells us that students will be more receptive and more willing to ask questions from an adult they know rather than from an outside source. The Utah Core Standards for Health Education outline the importance of teaching healthy relationships and bystander skills to our students. CCS is willing and ready to provide technical assistance to teachers on evidence-based best practices for this programming and to provide them with classroom and curriculum resources, including digital resources, that could be used in in-person, online, and blended learning activities. And we did bring a copy of the Utah, the Utah Core Standards for Health Education. We highlighted the sections that are relevant to us, but we also sent that out in the email. If you have questions about that, please let us know. So we ask and we hope that the Iron County School District can partner with Canyon Creek Services to promote the health and safety of students and families. Our services are completely free of charge and we hope that this meeting can be the first step towards a robust and thriving partnership of the district and school administration. Included on these slides and also in the letter from the Iron County Sexual and Domestic Violence Prevention Coalition, we ask these following things of the district and we would be happy to elaborate on the question and answer. We understand that these requests will not happen overnight, but we hope that this meeting can serve as the, begin the conversation that's needed to be able to implement more effective prevention programming in Iron County School District schools. So we want to make it very clear that we are not here to add additional burden on teachers. We're not here to try to ask you to add an additional box for them to have to check off, especially in this really difficult time. We just want to be here to serve as a resource and support in helping them supplement their existing programming and curriculum to address the stated core standards. We are more than happy to help them troubleshoot problems, provide them with feedback and resources, train them on how to even facilitate student disclosures if they disclose that something has happened to them. We would be happy to do whatever we can to support them in implementing this programming in their classrooms. So all of that being said, I know that was a lot of information. I would like to just open it up for any questions. And like I said, we don't expect to leave this meeting with everything solved and figured out. We just hope that this can be kind of the starting point for us to begin thinking more big picture on how we can make sure that we are addressing these stated core standards and preventing violence in the ways that we can in the schools. So thank you so much. Please, if you have any questions, please ask them now. I can also be reached this way if it would be easier to, if you have more information. Hi!
Hello.
Hello. How are you?
So I assume the teachers have the final say whether you come into their classroom or not.
Exactly. Yep. Yep. And we are very aware of the policies that relate to the curriculum that we work with from the district's perspective. The most common ones that we come into contact with is the cooperative agreement with community agencies assisting in classroom instruction. So yes, so that has been one of the barriers in us in implementing programming is that many teachers are worried about negative feedback from parents or from school administration or from the district. So if we were able to collaborate on some kind of an agreement or a statement or an MOU that said, you know, this is, we understand that CCS's programming is valuable and that their expertise in our community is valuable, that might eliminate some of those barriers for teachers and students.
So what grades are you, what grades are you providing this service to?
Yes, that is a great question. So most commonly, we provide instruction in seventh grade in the health classrooms. And then again, in high school, depending, that one's a little bit more varied depending on the grade, but in health classrooms and in adult roles classrooms. We also have done a couple assemblies. We did one at Canyonview High School and also one at Cedar High School. So those are the ages that we typically access students primarily because of the health classroom element, because it does go over health and relationships and bystander. But we certainly would be more than happy to think about expanding that and maybe even doing earlier interventions, age-appropriate interventions. Because we know that by the time that students get to high school, a lot of the education that could have been implemented, it's too late for. So.
I'm wondering, Kaylee, I'm not wondering, I think this is a good place to start. As you may or may not know, we have integrated social-emotional learning in our schools.
Yes.
Vice clinical social workers. I think that's the avenue to take rather than the teacher.
Yeah.
I think a good first conversation would be with our counselors and our vice clinical social workers and perhaps our administrators.
Yes.
And whoever else within our schools are involved in that social-emotional learning. We've done a timing on this with all of our teachers and so they're familiar with the term, they're familiar with what they are. But I think that would be a good, best first step.
I love that.
In strengthening the partnership would be to bring those entities together who have a real, a real knowledge about kids.
Yeah.
And about where the gaps are between services.
Oh, I love that. Yes. And I applaud the district's initiative on social-emotional learning and I think that is a great point of feedback and that is certainly something that I think we should explore. Absolutely. I agree.
Kaylee, so you see yourself coming in as, like, we do have groups from the CJC and people come in and they do, like, they'll do a section on dating violence and those things like that. So maybe paint a picture of what that looked like if you partnered with Cedar Middle School or Canyonview Middle School. Paint that picture for me.
No.
Would you come in monthly? Would you come just semi?
Absolutely. Yeah, so that is a great, that's a great question. I think a lot of what we're doing now, like you said, those presentations, kind of the one-time, coming into a classroom or to, in many cases, being in one teacher's classroom all day doing presentation after presentation. That's kind of what we're doing now and we do partner with different agencies to get that programming work how we want it. I think what we're looking for is we're seeing that some barriers with our one-time presentations where we just come in and talk about it and we never kind of follow up on that. And so I think one thing that we could definitely look into is, and we kind of talked about it in the letter as well, is ways that we can collaborate with teachers who are already implementing this curriculum as part of meeting state health core standards and providing them with resources and information and training on how to best facilitate those conversations. Because we know, like I mentioned, we know that me coming in one-time in high school and saying, "Hi, you know, this is teen dating violence, this is what it is, this is how to recognize it, and here's what you can do to help prevent it," in a 45-minute classroom setting, is not as effective as it might be if it was coming from a trusted adult like a teacher and being reinforced at multiple points in their learning. So that's kind of the shift that we're looking for. We're happy, we love coming into the classrooms and doing presentations, but I think the shift that we're looking for is looking more towards how can we be a resource to teachers who are already implementing this curriculum as part of meeting state health core standards? How can we serve as a resource to them and help them? Because I've gotten that feedback from teachers as well, is, "Oh, you know, we go over some of these topics in class, but I'm not sure how or I don't really know, so I always call you guys to come do it, which is awesome." And we're so happy that they do. But that's kind of the shift that we're looking for. Does that answer your question?
So if I hear what you're saying, your hope would be to provide expertise and training to our educators so that they're empowered to, whether it's on the day that they need to cover this information or in other times when it might organically come up.
Exactly.
They're kind of equipped to.
Yes, absolutely. And I think working very closely with the team members that Superintendent Delaney mentioned as well, whether it's school social workers or counselors who we have had some contact with and relationships with in the past, I think, yes, absolutely. That's kind of where we would like to be, that's what we feel would be most effective. Grant, would you?
Yeah, I was just gonna add, I think one thing that we find as we go out in the community and talk about this is the confusion over intervention versus prevention. And again, as I mentioned earlier, we are overly associated, and appropriately so, with intervention. Kids who come and disclose, "Something has happened to me," kids who are already in a bad relationship and what's going on, that's intervention. What we're really talking about is education as a form of prevention. And frankly, there's a couple of considerations. One is capacity. These two are the entire department of our organization. And we would be much more effective if teachers are knowledgeable about this material, have to do it anyway for the Utah Core Standards, and kids are hearing a little bit of it every year from middle school through high school. That's gonna be so much more effective than a one-time coming from the outside dose. Or frankly, even, I do agree that working for the social workers and the therapists can be effective, but almost always, they're gonna be interventionists instead of preventionists. And so we're really talking about taking hopefully a step forward to do what is already required in the Core Standards and saying, "We will throw every resource we have into and saying, "We will throw every resource we have into this and to try to make it as effective as it can be." Because we really want to be preventing instead of intervening.
And the sets of teachers that you would want to talk to would be our family consumer science and our health and the...
Yep.
And so systematically, we already have a... that could happen right now. I don't know if that requires board approval, because we can...
Right.
We can... and I know who we can talk to to get you into some of those areas where you can collaborate with those teachers, both as departments and schools as well as throughout the district. So, especially if that's your... if that's your main goal is to provide support for them as opposed to actually doing groups or something like that.
Yeah, absolutely. Did you... sorry.
Well, no, I just... have you met Roy Matthews?
Yes, yeah, they have.
I wanted to make sure you two... because I think this is an important connection for the two of you.
Yeah, we... yes, we talked.
Okay.
Yes, we...
And I guess my last thing is to Dr. Delaney's point. Our social workers certainly do play an intervention role, but they have also done a remarkable job at the training our educators. And what's been really wonderful to see is that our teachers are... they're on the... they're where the river meets the road. And because of the training that our social workers have provided, we have a lot of hands and eyes and ears that are able to identify and to provide help and support.
No, that's... and that's why I brought them up, because in the past, that has been the basic role where counselors and social workers is that intervention. But over the last four, especially the last four years, it's become increasingly evident that they need to be involved earlier and the prevention kind of efforts as well. So, you have them in our schools to lend their expertise in those prevention efforts along with our teachers.
Yes, that would be a great partnership. I think...
Sorry, I'm just quickly adding to. If there's... what's... that's also what's really helpful, is knowing that we have the support so that when we resist... when we kind of meet individual resistance, there's openness to say, "No, this is good." And the other thing is, for whatever reason, we understand that when you come in and you're talking about things preventing sexual violence, that all sorts of ideas and paradigms can come into play. All of our curriculum is 100% transparent. There's nothing hidden. We would love that... we would love to be as collaborative as possible with parent organizations and parents. There's... we're not... we're not coming in and doing anything that isn't already approved for... to be used in these kinds of settings and is totally age-appropriate and evidence-based. And so, that sometimes can be a barrier as well, is people misunderstand what we're doing or think we're trying to secretly do something. And there's no secrets, we're 100% transparent about it.
And I think to the point that was brought up, and it's a really good point, I thought of this this morning as I was preparing for this presentation. I think when we're talking about how we teach... how we teach students math, we start early on teaching them fundamentals of these are numbers and this is how they work and this is, you know... and starting to build the foundation for teaching kids how to do math. And so, we would never, you know, just have one person come in one-time to do an assembly at a high school and try to teach kids how to do math out of nowhere, right? We start from somewhere, we build as kids develop in an age-appropriate way to be able to reinforce those skills. Because I think that's something that's sometimes we need to think about as well is that when we're talking about healthy relationships and bystander intervention, yes, it's important information for kids to have about, you know, this is how many teens experience teen dating violence. But it really is, at the end of the day, it's a skill. Doing healthier relationships is a skill. Being an active bystander is a skill. So, if we're going to be teaching kids skills, we need it to be repeated dosage, not just a one-time, "We'll come talk to you about it and leave," but it really needs to be a repeated dosage in a way that's appropriate for kids, that engages teachers in a way that aligns with the state health core standards. So, I think that analogy kind of helped me put it together of, you know... we would never expect a kid to know how to do algebra if we just did a one-time presentation to them in high school, right? We expect them to know things because we do it in incremental and a way that builds upon themselves, so.
So, Kaylee, you mentioned... sorry, I'm over here.
Oh, no, you're good. Oh, no, you're good. I was like, "Who's talking?" This mask...
I know, right? So, you mentioned policy.
Yeah.
And the cooperative agreement with community agencies possibly being a barrier. That's definitely our realm. What... so, you mentioned maybe a statement of support. Or what are the barriers in that policy? And what would help facilitate?
I'm sorry, yes, no, I'm sorry if I misspoke. I would have meant that some kind of a collaborative agreement or something like that would be... would remove some of those barriers that we experience. So, some of the barriers that we experience, like Brandt mentioned, is kind of this resistance or like, "Well, I don't know if the district approves this," or "I don't know if this is what, you know, my school administrator would be okay with." So, if we had some kind of a statement where we could say, "You know what, we've met with district administration, we've met with your school administration, we have their support," that would help alleviate some of those barriers. Because, I mean, parents... teachers want to do everything that they can to equip parents with information so they don't want to get angry phone calls. The district doesn't want to get angry phone calls. So, if we can be as transparent as possible, there is a partnership with Canyon Creek Services, this is what it covers, this is what it doesn't, that might be a real help to us. And if it includes, you know, working with school social workers and counselors and certain identified teachers who cover this curriculum, then that would be... that would be our dream. Just because it would eliminate a lot of those barriers. So, I'm sorry.
Excellent, that makes sense, thank you.
I think it would be helpful to... to involve our parents in a review of the curriculum.
Yes.
And a review of the material and that kind of thing. That way, we are being transparent. And we are allowed to get through... just like we have parents who are here, our math curriculum or reading curriculum.
Right, right, exactly. I think that really would alleviate a lot of the fears because I could see, I'm not a parent, but I could see as a parent, you know, "Oh, these people who I don't know are coming in to teach my kids about things." But also, we could alleviate that fear and that barrier as well if we were equipping teachers who are already kids' teachers and have that established relationship. If we're giving them the resources and the technical assistance and lending our support and doing whatever we can to help them develop their already existing curriculum. That's one thing as well is in this... in the district policy on the cooperative agreement with community agencies, one of the requirements is it must support, not supplant, existing services and programs, which I think is so critical and so key, that we're not coming in supplanting our own curriculum. We want to be supporting the already existing excellent curriculum that our teachers are doing in the most effective way possible. So, I love that.
And the truth of the matter is, one, so the parents are more informed about what's happening with their kids, but we have found in our outreach to adults in the community that oftentimes, parents are going to learn things that is going to enable them to be better at preventing this kind of violence or having healthier relationships and making...
Right.
Better decisions and things like that. So, it's a win-win to be as collaborative and as open and as interactive as possible with the parents is what...
Yeah, there were even... I've read some different information from various prevention programs where they partner with PTAs and different parent organizations like Brandt mentioned to kind of get parent buy-in, because I think that's a big barrier as well. If they can see out in the open, "This is what we want to be teaching your kids," I think that will remove some of that resistance or that barrier, for sure. Are there any other questions?
I would suggest, and I think this will happen whether I make the suggestion or not, that you connect with Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
I think there's a lot of wonderful ways to collaborate. If you sense or feel strongly that a memorandum of understanding or some type of formal document that shows cooperation, I think we'd be willing to at least have that discussion and then I don't want to speak for the board. But I would prefer to stay away from policy. But in terms of, you know, something that endorses...
Yes.
Something that you felt like... so the teachers feel like there is some endorsement from the board, we'd be open to at least look at that. Does that sound okay, board?
Great, but yes, we will prepare everything. And with the best way to disseminate because of COVID and all the things, would that be easiest to be transmitted through email? Something best way for those types of conversations? And then if we need to schedule another meeting, then we absolutely can.
Yeah, I mean, where I think you're going to get the most thing for your buck is collaborating with our educators.
Great.
And then if we can... so, I'd love to kind of see... I'd love to hear back, and Roy could do that or if he wanted to come back. But just to see what has progressed with that, that would be nice.
Yes, absolutely. I would love to keep... with whatever we decide to do, we can definitely keep the board updated in one of... through various channels. So, thank you all so much for hearing from us today. There are incredibly long references.
And you provided them here, I appreciate that.
And all the information. We also included... I have my business card there, so if you have any questions for me directly about the presentation, please feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions. No question is a dumb question. There are questions that I encounter every day, so please. We also included a violence prevention brochure. This is new for our organization. This is not something that we provide to students. This is just something that I wanted to provide to you as a resource, kind of more information about prevention, why we do it, why it helps. But this isn't part of our curriculum, it's just something that I figured would be helpful. But if you have any questions about the presentation or suggestions, please let me know. Thank you so much for having me.
Appreciate it all, too. Thank you very much, Kaylee.
Oh, sorry, what was that?
What, you know, we're here.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Hi!
Okay, we have a public comment on this?
Yes, absolutely.
So, I'm really super supportive of what you guys are doing. I know we've been an avid supporter of Canyon Creek for a long time. And I just... I hope the board will really listen to this, because I've been in positions also where I've seen the effect of kids not understanding what abuse is and what's leading to it. So, as we go along and as the board changes later, I think it's just a really important thing we really keep in touch with and let the board be very aware of what it is you're actually proposing to put into the classroom. It is very badly needed, so just want to voice my support for that.
Thank you so much, we really appreciate that. Thank you. Is there anyone else? Sorry, I was so focused over here, I missed you, sorry. My brain.
Well, thank you again.
Yes, thank you all so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, with the system being down, it kind of impacts my... the next agenda item. But one of the requirements and one of my responsibilities as the board president is to ensure that we have annual training on the Open Meeting Law. And the way that is really nice to be able to document that is in the USBA Master Board Award. It's a tutorial that you can do individually. And then there is a test to kind of test your knowledge of what you've gained. And then that will record that we indeed have done the training. And so, I was going to borrow my computer, the system's down, but...
So, that will eliminate us having to have something to document.
It will, yeah. And that's really the way the whole state has moved because you might remember, those that have been on the board a little longer, we would have a session at our USBA conference in January. And... but it didn't necessarily guarantee that everyone went to that session. And so, this way, by doing the... doing that quiz at the end, it validates that there is, one, a certain knowledge level, because you get a percentage. And they ask some, I think, some pretty challenging questions. I mean, you can't... you really can't bluff your way through it without going through the training because it gets pretty detailed. But anyway, that is... as we make progress towards the Master Board Award, whether we complete that or not, we do need to complete the Open Meeting Law training. And it will also help you further progress towards the MBA Award. So, if I may give that assignment each of you...
So, we're going to do that in lieu of having somebody come in, right?
Yes.
It's going to be what we all do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And then we have a record of that we have indeed done that. And, you know, you're our newest member. I can help you. You have to create a username and password, and I can help you with that if you need. You should all be able to go. And if you're not quite sure of the address, just... I just do a Google search, "USBA space MBA", and it will take you right to that website, so. And, yes?
I just want to remind you all, make sure your microphones are on and you're speaking into them because we are recording.
Thank you.
But we need to be able to hear.
Sure. Thanks for that, Monica. Okay. Mr. Matthews, you're next on the agenda regarding girls wrestling.
I'll speak into the mic.
Now, we don't have to, like, speak.
Into the mic?
Yeah.
Okay, so, if you haven't watched wrestling over the past, I'd say maybe four years, girls have become part of that sport. And they've been doing this longer than four years, but it's been pretty prevalent over the last, like I said, about the last four years. Last year, they also held their own... I believe the last two years, they've held their own state wrestling championship for just girls. So, currently, what's happening in the state is they go to practice with the boys, they wrestle with the boys, they compete. And again, the last two years, they did break off for their own state championship with weight classes and everything else. So, the Utah High School Athletic Association has approved and sanctioned girls wrestling as its own sport, which, in my opinion, is a good thing. There's a lot of our girls who like to wrestle, but would never get on the mat with another guy and vice versa. And so, in this scenario, it gives them an opportunity to participate in something that they enjoy and have the opportunity to have their own practices, compete against... same... each other. Make sure I heard that correctly. Anyway, my experience is this is probably a good thing. I know as a wrestling coach, 20 years ago, it's been tough for some of our boys and girls both just not feeling comfortable in that situation. So, that being said, I don't know if you have any questions regarding this or anything that I could help you understand or answer moving forward. And I'll fill you in on what the schools have done.
Do they compete against each other?
Yeah, so right now, you would see... you would see, well, as of last year, you would have seen probably, maybe if you went to a big tournament, you would see a 20... maybe 20 girls spread out through weight classes, and they would be competing against the boys or girls. So, it would be a co-ed... it would be a co-ed situation. Does that make sense?
No.
But this is changing, huh?
Yeah, it's changing.
This is changing.
So, this is changing that, yeah. So, now, with it being sanctioned... thank you for the clarification. With it being sanctioned as its own sport, that would change that. So, the girls would be in their own league and have their own tournaments and move forward in that direction.
This is an action item for this afternoon. It's the 4 o'clock meeting, which we also...
So, our Parwin High School and Cedar High School have hired coaches for this. They actually had quite a few applicants for the coaching position. So, I know Cedar hired right now Luke Payne is going to run it for a year, maybe two, but he has two female assistants underneath him. And they want to really train with him and understand the sport better and work through that. And I know Parwin has hired a female to do that, so.
In the region, what schools have audenced wrestling programs?
Well, I think all of the region nine schools are going through the process that we're talking about right now. And at Parwin, same process is happening. The smaller the school that you get, I mean, it's, you know... I don't know what the numbers are going to look like. the numbers are gonna look like. I know, I think it was three years ago, um, Water Canyon, next to Colorado City, had a team of eight girls that were, were participating, so there are some teams that, you know, there's just a little bit more of an interest.
That'd be a little humiliating to have a big stout arm boy get pinned by a small little, eighty pound girl.
And they're good, and they're, they're really, yeah, I've watched a few that can just, they, they're, they're really, really talented, like, it's, um, really flexible too. I'm not very flexible, so, you know, I've been that guy, but it's swallowed my pride, but, anyway, it's been fun to, it's been fun to watch them grow.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Ryan? Okay, well, this has been, uh, an exciting day. I know it has been in our house to get back physically to the schools, and I know that we're not even, you were through the, not quite through the school day yet, but, uh, I thought it would be helpful to have this as a, an item, just to hear how things have gone since our last meeting, and, and up until this moment, and I think we have the superintendent and Todd listed to provide that update.
Sure. And happy to do so. I also let, um, Ryan and Steve and Kevin give some updates too. They were awesome being in the schools, more so than I was. I was kind of trapped, she needs some things out of the district, but, um, they worked in most of the schools today, so, um, I'd like you guys to relay the feelings that you were there. So, we had a smooth opening, except for our internet being down today. Um, everything else seemed to go smoothly. I visited with John Webster and Transportation, and, um, every child was delivered mostly on time and to the right spots. They were all delivered to the right spot. I'm wrong. No, all delivered to the right spots, mostly on time. That's how I should have put it. Um, and they worked very hard, and I appreciate our transportation department. Um, the internet's been challenging, because of course, that's how all of our schools get their lists of who's supposed to be where, but, um, they were awesome too. The parents left out and delivered them to our schools, and so we mediated all of that. Um, lunch services have had gone off with, uh, with Ledge and are working well, and we're still working out the, the logistics of providing lunch services for our students that are, um, engaging in remote learning, and that's taking place as well. So, I think we had a, a great start. I'll let you guys talk a little bit about what you saw in the schools.
I was able to attend the preschools, so that was kind of fun, to see the little kids light up to go to school for the first time in their lives, and, uh, the anxiety on the parents' faces, they think their kids are coming to school, so I stood down, left out, and it went very, very well. The kids were excited to be there, and the teachers were excited to have them there. So, that was exciting, and I spent time over at Parwin Elementary. They were humming along perfectly, as well as the high schools. So, the schools I attended have seemed to go very, very well.
And I, I had a chance to visit all the secondary schools today. Um, I was impressed, one thing teachers are good at, they're good at teaching procedures, and so I saw a lot of, um, you know, as I walked down the hall, and even at high school levels, and, and signage, um, I'm just, I'm confident in the plans that we put in place. I, I think our, um, administrators and teachers have done a good job, and I've got to witness that today, of just helping everybody kind of understand what's happening and how to, um, be as safe as possible and be as normal as possible. And I saw a lot of kids that were just, the feeling was they were just glad to be back at school regardless. I've used the example several times, I have a daughter that's a senior, um, she only cares about sports, she would wear a bucket on her head if it, and she got to go back to school, so, um, she was pretty excited this morning to get up and, and go. I, I saw a lot of that, I, anyway, so...
And I did not see any students with buckets on their heads.
That's good.
Joe, the elementarys, uh, you know, I think we were just delighted in how things began. Uh, the kids were just excited. I popped into several classes, and the students were just so excited to finally be in school. Uh, the teachers are excited to have students in the building, uh, you know, we, we, we go into this job because of the students, and, uh, it's, it's hard to find meaning in what we do when we don't have the students. And so, uh, everyone just seemed delighted to be there. The parents have been very supportive, uh, you know, like Mr. Matthews said, a lot of procedures with the students, uh, you know, from hand sanitizing, uh, how to go down the hall, how to navigate the lunchroom. Uh, you know, I just feel really confident in, in our plan. Uh, the schools, as I've been through the schools, they've done a great job in maybe their plan, and, uh, so we, we just feel very, very confident in that, and, uh, even the face mask, the students were pretty creative on the different kinds of face masks, with cartoon character rooms, all sorts of things, so I think, um, they even found a way to, uh, to find excitement, even in wearing an individual mask, and so, um, feel very, very good about how things have progressed so far with the elementarys.
So, for all three, uh, how are the students reacting to this change in protocols and safety stamps that are being implemented?
Joe, when I observed the elementary, uh, it just takes some practice, um, and as I've talked to the teachers, that's what they said, it's just, it just takes practice for the students. They, they used to, when they come in the classroom, they sanitize, when they go out of the classroom, they sanitize, when they go into the cafeteria, they sanitize, uh, and so it's just a matter of setting those, and it just takes some extra work on the part of the teachers just to establish that routine, but, uh, it seemed to, to go very well, the students were receptive to it. It's just gonna practice, be younger the age, the more practice it'll, it'll take.
I, I have a question. Um, I have, I received a letter from a concerned parent whose child has speech therapy, and, um, they also sent me a copy of the approval form from Washington County that allows those people in speech therapy to have, uh, the, just the face shields. It's like a waiver of sorts. And are we doing that? What is our situation?
Yeah, as far as, uh, speech therapy's concerned, our, our therapists will be wearing shields when you're, when you're providing that therapy, as well as our students will be doing that, you know, informing those, those words and things like that, that's pretty important. I think also, in our elementary schools, Steve, if I'm not mistaken, the adults are doing interventions as well. If it's early on, teaching, reading, and things like that, they will also have shields on to make sure that they can see all that. So, yes, we are providing those.
And they don't have to wear the mask and the shield, they can just wear the shield? I wonder why she wasn't even worn or maybe...
Well, Washington County has been in session. They started sooner, and so I, uh, she, I don't think, maybe she knew, since she hadn't been to school, you'd have, that would be an option. I'm just, I'm not familiar with the situation, but...
Well, I'm from college, I just wanted to know exactly what we were doing. Is there a way where they have to sign for that?
Joe, I think what we've, what we've done is, well, it's essential that the students see the mouth of the teacher or the interventionist, that we've allowed for the face mask to be, or the face shield to use. And so, I don't know if we've had a...
The waiver form.
A little more, because that's been built into our, our plan and how it's been outlined.
So, it's already part of our plan?
Yeah. I think the way you're saying it, you might tell our, that Washington County should replicate our...
That's what I'm gonna do. Makes me happy.
And for special ed kids, we're going to write it into our IEP too. We want that to be, uh, documented inside our IEP, so we've asked our teachers, if they hold those meetings, that that be placed inside there, that, that's an accommodation that we give, so it's a legal combination.
Yeah, I think this has been a little point of confusion for some people, because I've heard from a few people, and I wrote Shannon earlier about it, but, that they heard they were going, that the face shield would be adequate in those situations, and then heard that it was going to be combined with the mask, and didn't realize that there were these situations where that wasn't the case, and so they thought that we had taken a step back, heard we were gonna do the shield and the mask, even in those circumstances. And so I had a few people ask me about that as well, so I know that a lot of people have been confused about that, but... Well, as we, as you all know, we've gone through several iterations of how it started, where they tell us we can do this, and then they tell us, no, you can't do that, but you can do this. So, we've had to try to keep up with all of those iterations of direction as well, and, um, that's what we try to do in our updates, and I will lay updates on the, on the web and through our reminding system. Anyway, it's not a perfect system, and it hasn't played out perfectly, but I, I do believe that it helped for us with their opening. We'll just keep answering those concerns and answering those emails. I try to do it within an hour after I get them, so, anyway, if I can help any of you with any of those concerns, please feel free to reach out to me.
Do we have a restful percentage of attending today?
Uh, not yet, because our internet's been down. So, I can't even access Power School. I'm gonna be kind of with that number for again, we just, I don't have it, so...
I actually asked that question, just, I was just concerned, you know, how many were attending, and, uh, so I got that, uh, not a hundred percent accurate, but, like at Cedar High School and at Parwin both, their numbers were up, and I'm sorry, how many kids they had in the building that day, and so, anyway, it was...
Did Parwin last year, or...
Um, yeah, it would be, I mean, if you take out Success Academy students and law students, um, yeah, the numbers are up.
Are up?
Um, so, there, there wasn't, pretty...
So, have you seen it?
I better be careful. I don't wanna, I don't wanna paint a picture that they're a hundred kids, whatever, but pretty, pretty consistent, I would say, be a better way to say that, so...
So, that feeds into my question. How many have opted for just online school to be in the...
I visited, and you guys help me out with this. I visited with Jeanette, um, who has been monitoring our K6 online, and as of last week, we had about three hundred twenty-five of our elementary K6 students that would want to participate. Now, whether that, whether they followed through, and they are, or some of them decided to come to school, again, we won't have those numbers until we can access the data.
What about new numbers of students that signed up for school, like, that have move-ins?
We are really interested in that, because we're hearing from our administrators, we've got kids from Nevada and California and Arizona, where their schools are not opening up, who have opted to send children to uncles and grandparents, and in order to have their children have a normal experience, school experience. So, as soon as we can access the data, we'll, we'll pass that on to you. Steve, did you have...
No. Um, I would just get answered the same question about the online students. Um, we, we're still pinning that down. We were, we had several students that signed up over the course, just the last two days, uh, but probably between three seventy-five and four hundred students at this point that, that are on the, the K6 all the time.
Uh, I heard from, uh, Michelle and I were, uh, every August, uh, you might recall that, um, I'm gonna forget the name, but, uh...
The Doug Assembly?
The Doug Assembly took place this weekend, and you might recall, Michelle had been elected by our region to represent one of two spots, and I represented our board, uh, but the North Sevier superintendent, who, uh, their district had started before ours, uh, indicated that they've seen a real run on people that had opted to do online, and were now wanting to come back to the face-to-face experience, and so that has been an issue right now for districts as well.
And that'll be interesting to see how that plays out, since they have been in school for a week or so, what our, our first week of school looks like with those.
What about teachers? Maybe just generally, how are they feeling right now, and from what you could see, and how many did we have opt to teach remotely or take a sabbatical or take...
And I can only comment on the teachers that I visited with today and, and that I have communicated with over the last week, who are just, can I say, dang excited to be back in school and to be with kids, as was mentioned previously, that's why they do what they do. Um, has there been some hesitancy and some reticence, um, based on our current climate and, um, some fears out there?
Sure.
And we've tried to mitigate those through conversations. And Kevin, it might be best for you to speak too, how many teachers we've, we've had that were working with.
Yeah, so we, we probably have had, in exact words, fourteen, uh, full-time employees that have asked for accommodations, not all of them want to, you know, teach remotely. I think we have three right now that have asked to teach remotely, and some of them have asked, said, you know, right now I'm good, we'll see where this goes and what happens, but I may, if, if there's things that occur, I may want to teach remotely. There's probably two or three others that have said that that's something they would like to do because of the lack of health issues that they have, but wanted to start the year out and say, I can do it, yes, I think, but if it gets to three at this point, I may not be back in. So, I think we're looking at about fourteen right now that have asked for accommodations, but only three that are teaching remotely.
Any other questions? Well, exciting day. Please give our thanks to all our educators, and I appreciate Michelle asking that. I, I know that, uh, they're very much putting themselves at, at risk, because we know that a lot of homeless can travel through our schools, but Michelle, I'm going to go ahead and say something.
I was just gonna ask if Todd had anything to do with it.
Oh, yeah, sorry about that.
So, I know we had contributions, and...
I'm gonna pull this up just a little bit, 'cause every time I read it, it sticks, but, um, so I have a question from the last board meeting about PPE and about sanitization and that type of thing for the buildings. One thing I want to make, kind of clear up a little bit on that, the buildings were ready, we're going to be ready, um, and we had the supplies that we needed to clean those buildings sufficiently. We were waiting on one PPE and some supplies that would have made it, that are going to make, uh, cleaning the buildings a lot more efficient. So, yes, we are very grateful for the two weeks that we had to prepare, and I think that's district-wide, everyone was grateful for that. So, in those, and since the last board meeting, we have received just about everything that we had on order, as well as several items from the state that they've provided, and we've distributed those out to the teachers. The very day of the board meeting, we found another source for hand sanitizer, which was something that I was very concerned that we weren't going to have in that initial order that we made, clear back in June, and still hasn't arrived, uh, but we were able to find another source for that, and so we have those supplies in every classroom throughout the district, which is awesome. As I've been to some of the schools over the last couple of days, they look great. Our custodial staff have done an amazing job cleaning them, uh, teachers are well organized, everything's spaced out, you know, as well as they can reasonably do in their classrooms with some classes, and do the size of the room, the number of students. We obviously can't maintain a full six-speed between every student, but they have done a really good job with that. We appreciate all that they've done. We do have a few things on order for students. We have reusable cloth face masks for students, coming with their logos on them. Those will be here in the next few, couple of, two or three weeks, uh, which will be exciting, because they're face masks, but it'll be fun, I think, for a lot of the students to receive those, and as well as the teachers. But, we're sitting really good. Shannon already mentioned Transportation, they worked really hard. Um, the custodial staff has worked really hard, our tech, you know, support staff have done an amazing job, even with a couple of glitches in the last couple of weeks, so we appreciate all the time.
I have, I have a question about the individual supplies for each student. They were going to try and keep their own supplies and not, you know, transmit, like, between students? And I know that there was a couple of community members that were doing some gathering of that, and I'm sure Stephanie Hewlett also has, uh, you know, her cards or whatever for parents if they need them, but what, is there anything that's needed that way that we can get the word out to the community that, I know that's a big amount of supplies?
Like water bottles or pencils?
Well, yeah, they keep their own...
Yeah, well...
Pencils, crayons if they need them, you know, yeah. Is there a, a need for any of those?
I haven't heard of a need. Um, I think our teachers and our principals have worked well together to make sure that they order enough so that individual students can have their individual, um, supplies, whereas they share and pass. Have you heard anything? Todd? Steve? Ryan?
Yeah, I heard a lot in regards to needs for that. The classrooms that I've been in, I have seen those full individual containers in some of them, so, I'm not gonna say that every class is that way, 'cause I obviously haven't checked on every single one, but we can go and peel her out and see what some of those needs are.
Yeah, we'll get to this, though, if there is something, 'cause I think that there's enough organizations in town that would be willing to gather.
Our community has been awesome. I don't know if you tracked them, but several efforts, um, have been ongoing. And ongoing, and we have had those supplies collected and delivered to some of our schools. So yes, they've been wonderful.
Maybe since we have just a minute, I've heard great feedback from some of our teachers that are having the extra time to prepare. But anything, is there anything you add to kind of what that extra time is allowed for educators?
Without exception, everyone who has mentioned to me or talked about that added extra time is that it was critical. It was critical for our teachers to allow them to feel prepared. So that when they entered that building today, knowing that they had those students coming to their classrooms, they had the procedures in place, they had the signage in place, they had the supplies there for them. And they were able to put together their campus courses and their learning plans. It was essential. And I think it helped to let everybody take a big, deep breath and say, yes, we can do this. And they've been so appreciative. And so hopefully they reach out to you as a board and express that appreciation as they got to us. So would you guys add anything to that?
Yeah.
I'll just add this. I, I made at the delegate assembly, I was speaking here and some of the people talk from districts that already opened, it certainly gave us an advantage of being able to learn from the things. I know Alpen bought shields for all of their teachers and then the governor clarified. And anyway, it's like we may still have money. Anyway, I think the opportunity to learn from what people are doing and be a little bit down the road is what they're going to manage.
Thank you for that update. Ashley Peterson, welcome. Appreciate you being here. Come on up. Each year, as you know, we approve an annual literacy plan. And we will have Tommy and I at a four o'clock meeting to give a brief overview or approve that, but this gives us a little bit more time to go in more depth. Appreciate Ashley for being here.
You're welcome. Is this where I should stand? Should I go somewhere else?
That's great.
Okay.
Yeah, in the corner.
Do I need a microphone?
Yes, please.
I do.
Okay, I'll do, I'll do my best with this on. So I have this presentation made for you guys and then the internet wasn't working, so I panicked. So I ran home and printed off my slides. We're going to do this old school style and we're going to walk through it on paper. All right? So that's what this is, that's what these are. These are my slides I was going to show you. And then this one with the blue is the actual literacy plan that's been submitted to the state. The state has pre-approved it, so they suggest that we send it early and get pre-approved by them. So I don't have to come back to board meeting after board meeting after board meeting and get their approval if I did something wrong. So they have pre-approved this and they're good with it as long as you guys are good with it. So this is a lot to read. This says the same thing, but in a very condensed version. So this is the one I'm going to go over. But if you have any questions about what's on the other one, then I'd be happy to answer them. So the second slide, the first slide's a really cute title slide, so enjoy that. The second slide is our goals, they are our goals from last year. And we had four local goals and then we had our mandatory uniform growth goal from the state. The state sets that one. And then we choose four other goals to work on dependent on past year's data. We look at three years of data to make sure that we don't have any fluke years, no low years, no high years. And so we look at the average of those three years and then we make sure that it is a good growth goal by adding at least three to five percent on top of what our past, whatever we've done in the past, right? Whatever our past shows. So our uniform, our uniform growth goal was set by the state and that was 60% of our students making typical or better progress. So no matter if the students are below benchmark, if they're above benchmark, are they making the kind of progress that a student at that level should make? So this doesn't depend on the student's own, I mean, the student is really measuring, it's measuring them against themselves, not against other students. And so the state sets it as 60% of our students need to be making typical or better growth at MOY because we have no end of year data. So the middle of year, we already have 68% of our students making typical or better growth. So we were, we were doing really well with that. Our first local goal was to increase proficiency in second grade by six percent. We were at two percent at the middle of the year, which actually was super phenomenal. It might not sound awesome. Now I'm starting echoing, sorry. But in second grade, we usually go down at the middle of the year. So the fact that we didn't go down, we actually grew two percent was really awesome. And it was actually sitting at three percent until right when the window closed and then it dropped down to two. So I don't know who tested last, but.
So actually, maybe, maybe you could give some additional insight on why, why, why we would see it decline at mid-year?
So that's actually in second grade, if you look at the Acadians reading data across the nation, that's what the whole nation does in second grade. It's hard to show growth in second grade. And I think because you can see a lot of growth in kindergarten and first grade because you have kids coming in as non-readers and leaving as readers. And then in second grade, you're kind of starting to split that pack up to where now students who have real true learning disabilities, and it's not that they're not, like it's not that they haven't ever had an opportunity, but those students are kind of starting to come out and we can just, we can differentiate those students from other students who just haven't had any experience. So that's one part of it. And then the other part of it is the way that the test is made. Students test at the beginning of year on nonsense words, just to check their basic phonics skills. And then by the end of the year, there are no nonsense words and it's only strictly reading authentic text and those passages. So it's, it's not an easy year to show a ton of growth in. And just historically, that's the way it's been with, with Acadians reading for as long as I can remember. I know when Amplify has come here and do our data reviews with us, and Steve sat in a few of these with us, they would come and they would show us the nation like dropping drastically for second grade. And we were either flat or only dropping a little bit. And then by the end of the year, we would come up again, whereas their second grade dropped and then just flatlined across the nation. So it's just kind of the norm for second grade and it's due to many different factors. Yeah. So we are excited about that. I was pretty sure that we were going to hit our goal by the end of year in second grade, just because of also the formative assessment data. This middle of year data actually comes from December. This is before Christmas. So the students, we were actually collecting formative data up until they left in March and didn't come back. So looking at that data, I was really excited to see that our, our kids were still growing. They were still doing really awesome things. So we were excited. Our second local goal was that we wanted to move 54% of our second grade students who were already below benchmark. So students that were scoring in the yellow on Acadians reading, we wanted to be able to take at least 54% of those and move them into the blue or the green, get them where they needed to be by the end of the year. At the middle of the year, we moved 51% of those students. So we were really, really excited about that one. Our local goal number three was to increase proficiency in first grade by 13%. At the middle of the year, we were at four. So that one wasn't quite as exciting, but again, we, we still had, that was in December and first graders really pick up and run after, after Christmas. The year before, just for some context, our first grades made about 11 or 12% growth, which was the most our district has made in the last eight, nine years or something. They did awesome and they, actually it was more like 14 or 15. Now I don't remember, but anyway, they had made eight or nine percent at the middle of year and then almost doubled that by the end of the year. So four percent was okay, but not as amazing as we had been able to do before. And then our other, our fourth local goal was to maintain proficiency in kindergarten. NWS CLS stands for nonsense word fluency, correct letter sounds. And it's basically just a measurement of basic phonics skills. Can students recognize individual letters and, and say the sounds that they make? And it's just a precursor to being able to decode texts. So that's what that showed. The, for middle of year to end of year, we have always gone down in kindergarten for the number of students proficient. So our goal was just to be able to maintain that this year. We were not able to get any data because we took the MOY test, which is the first time they take that test, and then we didn't have it at the end of year. So I have no idea how that would go. Because, on the next page, because of COVID, we had no end of year data, obviously. So the USBE decided that for our future literacy plans, or learning plans now as they're going to be called, we would just choose two of our goals from the year before and continue working forward with those. So we went back and my reading specialists and I talked about it and talked about what we saw, our teacher needing extra support in, where we were, where we felt like we were making a really good difference, where we needed more work. And we picked a couple of local goals based off of that. And then our major concerns this year, as we move forward with this, is that we want to be able to provide best practices with literacy instruction, but also be able to approach it with the correct safety precautions. So like you guys were talking about face masks and shields and things earlier, we know from research, research that kids have to see the way the teacher's lips move in order to learn letter sounds, kindergarten, first and secondary. It is imperative that students are able to recognize that. And for some of our most at-risk students, including our dyslexic students, where they can't individualize and differentiate between different sounds, they have to pay attention to the way that their mouth moves in order to determine the difference of sounds. So for instance, if a student struggles between the "i" and the "e", which is hard enough for you to hear from me with a mask on, if they're having a hard time differentiating between short "i" and short "e", a lot of times if you bring their attention to the way the mouth is shaped, that's what does it for them, because they can't necessarily hear the difference. It's a breakdown in the brain for dyslexic students. And so we're really encouraging teachers as they teach phonics lessons and when students go to intervention and they work on the word study component of that, where they're working explicitly on phonics, to put a face shield on over their mask and then pull their mask down while they do the phonics part of that and then put their mask up when they don't need to anymore. And really encouraging students to use mirrors and look at the way their mouths are shaped and being able to just use the shields as much as they can in that sort of instruction. Also, some of our best practices with interventions is that we take students from across the grade level and we group them according to their needs. And that's a lot easier to do when you're pulling from three or four different classrooms. But when you have one classroom with those students and you could only group those kids, you've got a lot of different needs. Whereas before, we could have four different teachers tackling four different needs, including the interventionist, and now you have one teacher and one interventionist trying to tackle five or six different needs of students. So we're doing the best that we can. Those are our concerns, but everybody's prepared and ready to move forward and they're excited to do what we can, but we are just a little bit nervous about that.
I'm a little nervous about it.
We all are, it's fine.
So you talked about mitigating the teacher having the shield and the students being able to see the teacher. We know it's also important to the teacher to be able to see the students and how they're forming those words and their responses. And as you said, with these mirrors and those kinds of things. So are we putting some safeguards in place as well so that the students can also be wearing shields during that time so that teachers can? And what are we doing in those cases?
That's a, that's a really good question. The schools that I have been training at and that I've been talking to the most, they have ordered shields for their students to be able to use while they're in interventions so that they have access to that as well. I've been training at Iron Springs the last two days. I'll be back tomorrow. Prior to that, I was at Cedar Middle School. And so they do want those kids to have the shields while they're in interventions. They probably can't wear them all day, but at least while they're in there doing that part and at least the fines component of their intervention, that's what they are really encouraging them to use.
If you could just keep close contact with Steve and with myself so that we, we could help you through that.
Absolutely.
Because we know that learning doesn't just take place during interventions.
Oh, for sure.
And we know that there will be times in the regular class time that we'll need to accommodate so that we can increase learning, so that we don't have a decrease in student learning. So let's just stay on top of that, because those are things that we do have control over as a district in how we handle that during class time, during intervention time. So let's just stay in close contact.
For sure. When, uh-huh, when I was talking with reading specialists before, when we were having our meetings, they talked about how we were just, we were all brain dumping, like nobody knew what to do. And so we're like, let's all just come together and try and figure this out. And Steve was there for part of it. And they said, well, what about, what if we, how our teachers take their kids out on the lawn while it's warm and work on phonics lessons outside and putting awareness lessons outside? I mean, 15, 20 minutes here and another 20 minutes there. And some of them were really excited about that. So there, there are a lot of different options here that we can do to allow and to use the best practices to whatever extent that we can. So yeah, we're getting creative if nothing else. So all right, moving on from that, here are our future goals for this year, 2021. And like I said, they are just the same goals as last year, two of them. The first one is really wordy, but basically I highlighted and highlighted the ones that are, the words that are the most important there. We're going to decrease the percentage of second grade students scoring below benchmark from BOY to EOI by 54%, meaning we want to take, that's the same one where we want to take those kids in the yellow and move them to green or blue by the end of the year. So that's our goal with that. That focuses on the intervention that the students are receiving and professional development for our teachers to ensure that they understand what exactly is that their kids need so that they can make the best decisions for how to reach those students in the classroom. Because they, they don't have the option to just rely on the intervention like they've been able to do before. They're going to have to take care of a lot of that in their classrooms at some of our schools. And so they, when they are more aware of how these reading interventions and things work, they can, they can accommodate many student needs based on that. And even just changing some of their regular classroom practices to better accommodate the needs of their struggling learners and it even benefits all of the students in their classrooms. So we're working on that this year. They're also going to be using the early intervention software, part of the EISP grant. All of our schools are, did get one, at least one software. I think they all actually only got their first choice. So we have eight of our nine schools utilizing Lexia for that and then one of our schools using LAR for that. So those students will be able to access the intervention software as well. Oh, and that's second grade students, if I didn't say that. And then our second goal is for kindergarten, because we were really excited to see where kindergarten was going, we didn't get any really information on that. So we really want to focus in on kindergarten as well this year, working on those basic phonics from the nonsense word fluency, correct letter sounds subtest of Acadians reading. So tracking our students, progress monitoring our students, making sure that we are providing the best instructional practices possible. And we want to, our goal is to have all of the coaches be in the classrooms for kindergarten and second grade as a priority, but all the classrooms in the school. And we are going to work on observation forms. All of our coaches in the district, we will all have an observation form for what we're going to go in and look for in the classroom. And then we will provide coaching and feedback to the teachers that way. And then we will come back together as a team of literacy coaches and we will talk about the things that we've seen and talk about what, what's going well in some classrooms, where some teachers are struggling in other classrooms, and be able to work collectively to give them the tools that they need and provide the professional development that we have for our early out Wednesdays to those teachers, to all teachers, so that they are more aware of what their students need and what they can do to help them become successful readers in the classroom. So that's who we're going to keep it system-wide so that we're all kind of reaching for the same goals and using the same practices. And then again, our uniform growth goal that is mandatory, set by the state, it's the same, 60% of students making typical or better progress. We always hope for more. We think all students should be making typical or better progress. We don't want anybody making less progress than we should because that widens the gap. So we're working on it and we're doing pretty good at that. All right, so our focus this year, I guess I kind of talked about this, observations with coaching support for teachers. Myself and three other coaches in our district are going through Letters Training. LETTERS stands for Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. It is written by Lisa Moats and Carol Tolman. And it is, I mean, people pay $15,000 for them to come into their district and provide PD to a school or group of teachers that way. We were able to, the state is paying for that for a cohort of teachers to do that. And so myself and three other coaches from Iron County are involved in that. So we plan to, we will become certified letters trainers and then we can actually go out and provide that to our students, to our schools, free of charge, not $15,000 because we're training that. And so we don't have to pay them to come because now we will be the experts as well. So that's one major focus that has really actually helped. Talking with the other coaches that have been in the trainings with me, one of them was talking about, I learned all this stuff and I was able to use it in summer school and I was able to help this student with this problem that I wouldn't have known that they had unless I took the training. So I think it's going to be really, really awesome. Some of our coaches have been through Letters Training prior as well, but it's been a while. So we're also going to focus on having beginning of year, middle of year and end of year Acadians data analysis meetings. In the past, USBE has provided those. They teamed up with Amplify. We've been able, we've been able to host some of those at the district office. I'm sure many of those, if they have them, will be virtual this year. So yeah, we encourage our teachers, especially our focus grades of kindergarten and second, to attend those. And a lot of the teachers who have come have said that is, I now know what my assessment data needs. When they take the assessment, I can look at it and say, oh, this is what I need to do for this student. Whereas before, today was just all colored dots. So that's been a great tool in the past. We'll focus in on our tier-two interventions. I started at the beginning of the year, always going around and providing training to everybody, all of the new interventionists coming in. And so that's what we've been working on lately. And so that's what we've been working on lately. And then the thing I'm actually super excited for is from our tier three grant, the grant for interventions for students with reading difficulties. We were able to purchase Spider with that grant last year. We were able to get it up and going in January and then we were gone in March. So even with just those few months of implementation, we saw some really promising things with our students who in tier two have just kind of hit a plateau, who have not been able to make any progress up and who haven't fallen down, but that just are flatlining. And all of a sudden, we put them in this tier three that is more intensive and more personalized for what they need and they started growing. So we're super excited about that. We have five schools involved in that grant right now. And then two, at least two, maybe three, I'm trying to think of where these teachers are. At least two of the other schools who are not involved in the grant have actually called me and said, can I get some of that stuff? Where can I buy that stuff? How do I get on that list? They've been really excited and it's been exciting for sped teachers as well because they're like, this is something, this is exactly what my students need. And now I have a tool and I don't have to just make it up on my own as far as the science of reading and helping students who have a learning disability when it comes to reading. So we're excited about that, to continue with that. We'll be in that grant for three years. So last year was our first year. We're working on it for the second year. And then next year will be our last year in that grant. So, and then in the future, there are some changes to the literacy plan, which I mentioned a little bit before. It's going to be called the Early Learning Plan because in the legislative session, they changed it to where we're going to be able to have a math screener assessment instead of just a reading screener, which Acadians reading is. So we'll have a math screener as well to target students who have disabilities or who are struggling with math, who are most at risk in math. So we will have math and literacy goals in future years once we're able to get that screener up and going. And then we will, and then, yeah, then they will just change from the Early Literacy Plan to the Early Learning Plan because of that. So we'll have one math goal, one literacy goal, still a uniform growth goal. And then I think we can have up to two more that will be optional, but those three will be required. And I guess that is it. So this is all the same stuff written in really long form. It tells about our program that we use, CCALE, which is Core Knowledge Language Arcs, and how we use that, how we use assessment to drive that, how we use our interventions and things such as that. So doing the best that we can to get that done in a year of the coronavirus. So it'll be really exciting.
Thank you, Ashley. It's important, what questions do we have for Ashley?
I just wanted to ask, since we did go online in March and I know there was some summer school, but do we have any idea what to anticipate with our beginning of year scores and what those might show us as far as any gaps or are things that may have happened last year?
We have been wondering the same thing.[1586.37]